All right, everyone. Thanks for joining us today. It's April 2nd. It's eleven oh one I am. We will go ahead and get started. This is a regular meeting of the Lake County Board of Commissioners. So. Okay, we will start by making sure everyone's cell phones off and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I am joined in this studio by the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, we are.
Thank you all very much. Okay. We have a pretty decent agenda today. I don't believe like there is anything that needs to be changed. Either what number seven changes to?
No.
I'm going to put a different agenda for others. I was reading.
A second.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, community informational items, we'll start with Commissioner Munch.
Sure, uh, the Coolsoft or Colorado wildfire strategic action. The work that was scheduled to start in mid-July is all postponed, but we need to speak and get in touch with the Swift Group. They're about to start hopefully in a few days. But we'll be posting.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Fiedler?
Uh, maybe it's one thing that people may have noticed some activity up on the Union Pacific site. Um, our former Union Pacific site that the county purchased for the new Justice Center. Um, being for us in jail, that activity, there's really good age-related ring onsite that's doing the more detailed geotechnical evaluation just to understand. For the stability of the site for how to give the foundation new site plan. So there's no reason why there's anyone asking what trucks are doing now on that site. That's what I was.
Um, nothing for me, just continuing to import our transportation. We submitted our application for multimodal funding for our local T I M C R. And then. In addition to the. I guess nineteen, so that's what they're working on by consulting. I don't have anything, uh, just that the next few Fridays in town are a little busy, there's some closures. Um, so to give a little staff and visitors who sit in the courthouse. Um, be sure to make plans before Friday or planning coming on Monday. As parking will be tough to find and a little more challenging to navigate. Just to be present of our very busy. Any commissioner clarifications today? All right. Uh, moving on to public comments and items that are not listed on our agenda today. Um, citizens wishing to speak to issues not on the agenda are requested to send a message in the chat section or we can. Um, if you're on a Zoom call or in person, we will call, the chair will call on you in order to make comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. Um, if required, any action that comes from public comments would be directed with county staff. Um, and followed up with after our, after our meeting with those making the comment. Uh, departments and so if anybody has any public comments, please feel free to raise your hand or put your name in chat at this time. Kristi, you are welcome to come up. Um, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna make sure that I'm putting any other. Okay, okay, we're good. So Kristi, you are welcome to start.
I'm here with my professional hat on today. I know last time. So the homelessness subcommittee of the housing coalition has completed their homeless relief assessment. We should have received that electronic file in paper. Kudos to them. They finished that in two months, which is like unheard of and outstanding and just goes to say like how committed the leaders. The providers in this community are to helping organizations to deal with homelessness in our community. Um, we've doubled down and committed to trying to do a strategic plan in the next two months. Um, and that's because there's some HUD funding that comes available in the fall that we're really aggressively trying to work towards. There's a lot of things that we figured out before that, but what sort of provider would be on that application? Uh, but just wanted to let you guys know that that is what's coming up next. Obviously, I'm not going to come out with a phone. Um, so I'm going to go home and tune in electronically for the last little part. And the other thing I wanted to say is last time you guys had the joint work session up at the. College and we were talking about like seats for the regional housing authority. I remember you guys talking about, um, people both with lived experience and with type of. Our profession. And so I just wanted to remind you guys that you thought that that was a priority. So I know you're picking like your representatives and then the four will pick the three more. So I just wanted to say, I think it's pretty important to try to balance of like experts in the dictionary on that word.
Thanks, Kristi. We appreciate it. You will watch for you. Thanks, Kristi. Um, is there anyone else with us today that would like to make a public comment on items not listed on our agenda? Do not have anyone waiting in the waiting room, your participants, and we do not have anyone. Kurt and Colleen are here, but I don't, I believe you would like to make a comment. And Janelle, sorry. Okay. Um, so with that, we will move on. Um, into new business. Uh, number one on our new business agenda is the petition for abatement or refund of taxes. For Dylan Radio, Realistic. Okay, um, so this is presented to us by Stephanie and Brad, the deputy assessors. So if you'd like to throw up, you're welcome to.
You want me to just turn?
Yeah, whatever you'd like to do.
I'm real estate. Um, so, uh, for. For the, for, um, highway name one, when you resell your property, you determine whether it should be a discount for excess land. Can be over two acres. Out there, um, similar to the way we discount other land. Another property in the county and for some reason when we did that, we missed this property. And so, um, he did petition, Sir Craig Jack, he's from New York. Del, well, yeah, I mean, but he's the manager, he did protect. Um, until he, I didn't first into apply for abatement, so I would like to recommend that we do. Of thirty-one thousand, twelve dollars and forty-four cents.
Can you, um, just explain the discount for excess land?
So it's, um, a seventy-four percent discount. And we just determined that based on, um, maybe something similar in the city limit. Over point one eight acres. And so, um. Sure highway number one is. City or anything over point one eight in floodgale and then over two acres.
And excess land is. A land that's not.
I should anything over, if it's anything over two acres, it's not that it's not usable. Um, just so you can market that, I would thought like the most appropriate thing to do.
Okay. I don't have any questions.
We have a lot of folks who do. There.
I have to give you a minute. Sure. Commissioner Fiedler, do you have any questions?
Can you just put everything out? So that discount is just like what you're seeing from the market and we don't know why the market.
Yes. For some reason, maybe one of those a little weird.
Yeah, I can see that. Yeah.
Yeah, and so it just seems inappropriate to value everyone. The way we do, they want us to face almost sales. Because we seem a little outrageous and just. Not very equitable and, um, so that's why we decided on that discount. And I think we missed this property and it made taxes over sixty-eight thousand dollars. And so that's why I'm proposing to, yeah. The, the new value that I gave to consider account that good count. Then we begin back up with one thousand dollars. For twenty-one.
So we're just making it consistent with how we view it.
And.
Gosh, I don't, I'm sorry, I didn't. Oh, I didn't. I'm sorry, I don't know.
The abatement, I was looking at.
I'm sorry. I didn't think about.
I don't have any questions.
No, I don't have questions, maybe just to, because it's. Pretty straightforward.
How, um, entertaining Washington for this.
Do we approve, uh, the petition or to approve the abatement?
Um, you were approving my recommendations.
So I believe that we approved the stamp recommendation for payment taxes for the value that the state home installs.
Any further discussion? Okay, none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you. Um, so then we'll have to be filled out.
Okay.
So do you want me to?
Yeah, if you leave it, we'll get that to be fair about during the meeting. Um, yeah, no problem. Um, next we have resolution two dash and eighteen according to arbitrators for yields and decisions of the county board of equalization. Um, it's a, this is presented by arbitrarist order, I would record. I, do you have any comments to bring us today, Cindy, or the. There is this resolution that I found in folder. Sure. Um, so Cindy, I'm kind of is here, she's, uh, the deputy clerk, uh, clerk in your board's office. Um, really, this is, uh. We are writing and pointing arbitrator should someone choose to go through the arbitration process. Um, in county board of equalization. E A A or Florida versus that's the one we feel is the state.
I don't see any names. Wait. They've been following the.
It doesn't list.
Oh, there. All right, resolution twenty-two dash nineteen or as resolution appointing arbitrators for the field from the decision of the county board of equalization. Whereas pursuant to section eighty-nine dash eight, that's one oh eight point five. C R S has amended the board of county commissioners of Lake Colorado hearing of the board and required to appoint and develop a list of qualified arbitrators for the field process of the decisions of the board of equalization. And whereas the arbitrator selected shall be available to property owners desiring to submit arbitrage to arbitration or a decision from the county board of equalization. And whereas the board has considered the qualifications of the persons interested in acting arbitrarers for the appeals process and desires to make appointments at this time. Now therefore be it resolved by the board of county commissioners of Lake County, Colorado. Section one, the following persons be and are hereby appointed arbitrarians for the field process from the county board of equalization. For a term commencing immediately and continue on year unless sooner terminated by the board. Section two, the board of county commissioners hereby finds the terms and the plans that the resolution is necessary for the public health. Welfare of the residents of the county of Lake State. Auto. Section three, all residents in board of county commissioners. Sorry, all resolutions of the board of county commissioners inconsistent are repealed. Section four, this resolution shall become effective upon adoption. Uh, adopted this second day of the new rule, August twenty-two, and those twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two arbitrators are listed as will you, Al Van Rehovin? Deb Marsh. Um. Resolution twenty-two dash seventeen.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Thank you.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. Uh, moving to new business item number three. File twenty-two dash nineteen, the conditional use permit application. For the leadville mine drainage tunnel water treatment plant at seven forty-nine, highway ninety-one, which was today by Anne Schneider, the director. Um, the department of community development and planning. Um, today we'll review both the statement of motion twenty-two dash nineteen and official action record. Um, also just as a gentle reminder, um, this conditional use permit has gone through the public hearing process. And so at this time, we won't take any additional public comments on the pending statement of motion or official action record. Um, so that we don't reopen the public hearing and have to submit this back to the commission. So just, um, putting that. I will let you start. Thank you so much.
I'm not a total motion today from, uh, and recommendation from the planning commission. At its July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two joint public hearing, the Lake County planning commission made seconded and approved by a roll call vote. Of six members in favor and zero members in opposition to the following motion. The motion having been made by Abby Bowman and seconded by Joey Edwards. They moved that the planning commission recommended approval to the board of county commissioners of file twenty-two nineteen. The conditional use permit application for the leadville mine drainage tunnel water treatment plant. At seven forty-nine, highway ninety-nine with the following conditions. One, file twenty-two dash twenty, a high bearing application for the L N D T water treatment plant shall be approved by the Lake County Board of Adjustment. Two, the boundary survey shall be recorded with a closing quarter. Three, if ultimately determined to be required, the applicant shall apply for subdivision exemption of the, of the property. And before the number of wall mounted elimination shall be reduced by at least twenty-five percent. And further finding that as conditioned, the proposed conditional use is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies. Contained in the late county conference of plan. Two, that as condition, the proposed conditional use conforms to the requirements and provisions of this code. Three, that as condition adequate public safety, transportation, and utility facilities will be available to serve the subject property while maintaining sufficient levels of service for existing development. Four, that as condition, the proposed conditional use is not likely to be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of county residents. Or to cause hardship to neighboring persons. Number five, that has condition, the proposed conditional use is consistent with and harming with neighboring land uses and future intended land uses in the area. Six, that as condition, the proposed conditional use will not result in overdoing sins of these if a landlord takes this land in land. Number seven, that as condition, the proposed conditional use will not result in traffic congestion or hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic. Eight, that as condition, the proposed conditional use does not unnecessarily surround the land on which to choose would be located. Number nine, that as condition, the proposed by of the conditionally permitted and will be free from natural or manmade hazard. Where this is top hazards can and will be adequately mitigated. And, and the only, a couple of comments, um, from, from that, um, motion to provide to the board. Um, the height variance application was approved by the board of adjustment on July twenty-seventh. So the height variance has been approved. Um, and speaking with the applicant, uh, there is perhaps, I believe that their surveyor did in fact recall the survey and it's done. So we're just, um, double checking on that. Um, Janelle brought that to my kitchen and perhaps, and it has been reported. And so we're going to look into that and make sure that we don't do it twice. Um, check sugar and then make sure that G I S has it just so they can adjust the boundary. According to the survey. Um, we did have a, a pretty good discussion with the applicant, I think that the board was present bringing that about the reduction of the elimination outside. And, um, they didn't feel like that was a detriment to the safety or functionality of the facility and that that was a reasonable request. Um, and then the, uh. The planning commission didn't, um, really land on, um, in the commission number three of ultimately determined to, if ultimately determined to require that they do apply for subdivision exemption. Um, that. I would just ask the board to consider, um, whether or not that they have had any thought about that. And if, if maybe some clarity of if that should be applicable or not. Might be an easier, um, condition at the final approval to, you know, right now the commission's kind of open-ended and doesn't have a lot of. Direction on who's going to make that determination on, uh, if it's ultimately determined or not. And, um, so I think. Um, item that could be brought forward is that the parcel may have been. And may not have been in its current configuration prior to nineteen seventy-two, which would track with, um, the, the need for potentially legalizing the parcel. Pursuant to subdivision regulations. However, the flip side of that is that this is a federal holding and doesn't necessarily have to adhere to state and local, um, regulations. So, you know, is it providing some kind of direction, um, for the bureau in, you know, is this something that the board would like to see? Or have we, um, their desire has been to be collaborative, um, and. Process, but is this additional step something that the board feels is necessary? Um, and, and so I, I, I would just give a joke, maybe we might have considered not approve either not giving the final recognition or orders. But right now it's kind of on the fence and so I think that happens direction in your final, um, approval or people missions.
Is there? There a benefit to having the subdivision exemption or is it really just a nurturing process for us to have a property required or?
So it would, it would, um, be a process to, that you have the legislative ability to exempt certain parcels from the building regulations and say, you know. Um, uh, power to be able to do that in particular instances. So it would be, or I think that you have the same ability to say, we're exempting it. So do we need to put another layer of process in place? Or is it enough that the United States Code itself are basically free space and shit? So I, I don't think that the, the flip side of it is, I don't think that it would be detrimental to saying. You don't really need to do the subdivision exemption because I think you could rely back on the United States Code for the same basis.
Is the exemption just regarding water use or is it just to clean up the lot line?
It's, it's.
Because I, in the application, I mean, all of the, the, the historic use of recovery and the water and all that, that has been committed through the state. Agencies, but that's not an issue.
That's a really good point to bring up, Sarah. Um, you know, sometimes it's also addressing the water use or historic water use. And that's not in jeopardy for them whatsoever. So there wouldn't be any additional benefit from that. So you're. Not a need, you know, to go through the process in order to, to secure water.
So who would make the determination of that being a requirement? It would be us right now.
That's what, what staff would just suggest and maybe they would notice it.
If we just clean them.
Yeah, just clean up that one condition and say, if it is meaningful or we've determined it's not. And so just keep it out of your final, uh, motion.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't fill out the application with the site name. The whole, uh, there's how many?
Parcels? No, it was just the one parcel. There was, well, there was a little bit of, into the chain of title and.
It was the acquisition of them and the collection of them through the years. And it was a problem. And so that they all are surveyed as one currently. Okay, I don't, you know, like, there's a.
So you, your question answered mine. It's like, if this is a private commercial property, there would be some need or value to that to clean up this stuff where it's for water.
There's no.
But here's just not relevant.
Um, that's just. Can we address that after a motion to approve or deny the conditional use permit? Or do you need to do that separately?
So I think we would make a motion to approve the statement of motion with the removal of these three, right? I don't have any other questions on this. And that just, there's no, I'm sure if we might use them against the board of adjustments.
Well. It's been approved and.
Okay.
Um, I move to a motion to twenty-two dash nineteen. And the application for leadville drainage tunnel water treatment plant at seven forty-nine, every one. Uh, with the removal of condition serene, um, regarding subdivision exemption.
Okay, any further?
This one, I'm making the action record is a very tiny typo.
So I will, um, just go upstairs, we can back, we can go down before we're done. So if you can find the one year, there's a highway ninety, it's highway nine twelve.
Okay.
The next year to win it. We haven't given it two instead of a comma. But the three people finding that, I love having it.
Cause some lawyer. Three years.
No, thank you for providing that.
All right. Any other discussions?
Um, I'd just like to take another opportunity as we did during the hearing and, uh, thank the bureau for the collaborative spirit of the conversation and the development. The replacement of the, the plant. Um, another, you know, really important, where all that, it was really great, Mark, I see you online too, to have you at that hearing and give a brief little history of. Um, the function of the facility. Um, I think we should probably do that more often, just as a, you know, a public informant, think formation. Uh, uh, exercise. Um, and, and also I really, um, excited about, um, the extension of that Parkville line and that water line.
Fire suppression.
Yep, of the hydrants and, and fire suppression and safety for the facility as well as, you know, potentially the neighborhood and, um. Uh, Mountain Valley Estates can, uh, uh, also, you know, hook up to Parkville Water District, which, um, could potentially be a great benefit to them in the future. So, um, good benefit all now. Thank you, Janelle.
Thanks, Mark. All right, any further discussion?
No.
All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you very much. And, um, here. Okay, um, moving on, this is file number, or I'm sorry, this is item number four on our agenda for new business. File number twenty-two dash twenty-seven, Schweiger A D U conditional use permit. Lots five and six, block eleven, Twin Lakes, presented by Anne Schneider, the director of the Department of Community Development and Planning. Um, today we have the official, uh, I'm sorry, the statement of motion and official action record from two dash twenty-seven. Um, with the state and just, um, again, as with this application, um, just as a reminder that the public, public hearing process is closed. And so we will not take, um, any comments, um, on this pending statement of motion, but just that I want to use. When staff walk us through that. So go ahead, Ian, I'll turn this over to you.
Great, thank you so. The motion for file number twenty-two dash twenty-seven, at its July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two joint public hearing, the Lake County Planning Commission. Seconded and approved by a roll call vote of six members in favor and zero members in opposition. The following motion, um, the motion made, having been made by Bryce Hood and seconded by Abby Donovan. The planning commission recommend approval of file number twenty-two dash twenty-seven, the Schweiger A D U conditional use permit. Lots five and six, block eleven, Twin Lakes, to the board of county commissioners with following conditions. Number one, consolidation of lots five and six, block eleven, going to ten lots. Number two, and a curbed over E T S permit for engineered shared subject system, number three. Number three, compliance with the lake that will land development, courtesy dwelling needed, A D U standard, section five point three, point one B, one three seven. All statements made by applicant through the submitted application document and shall be conditions of approval specifically, the map limited two. The proposed use of good willing to serve community housing needs on a long-term basis. And further finding that the proposed condition. All the decrees and policies contained in the only compromise of the plan. Two, the proposed condition is to conform to the requirements and provisions of this code. Free, adequate public safety, transportation, and utility facilities will be available to serve the subject property. While maintaining sufficient levels of service for existing development. And before the proposed conditional use is not likely to be detrimental to the public health. And before the proposed condition uses is not likely to be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare of county residents. Corticals hardship for neighboring persons. Number five, the proposed condition uses is consistent with harmony with neighboring land uses and future incident land uses in the area. Number six, the proposed conditionally use will not result in overly intensive use or land relative to the surrounding plant. Or seven, that as conditioned, the proposed conditionally use will not result in traffic congestion or hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic. Number eight, proposed conditionally use will not unnecessarily starve the land in which such use would be located. Number nine, the proposed site condition use is and will be free from natural and animal hazards or that the hazards can and will be adequate immediately. Number ten, there is an ecological or social benefit you want to hide. And, um, I guess, I don't think there's any staff comments about, um, the, uh, conditions that the board was present during a lot of that discussion. And if there was anything after the motion change that I think that really changed. And so I think that the board really heard everything that the planning commission considered before they made the, um, the motion. So maybe there's any additional other than, um, you know, I think that this is a place to congratulate the county applicant of utilizing the new production to recognize that there should be an ecological and social benefit in allowing more than one dwelling in the business and district. Um, absolutely a piece where we're going to want to have a better environment work. Um, they can find this proposal. And also, um, I think there's incredible merit, um, that the applicant is very vested in this area, both in its historic preservation as well as finding long-term actually housing benefits and, um, solution to that community. So I think that this is really great application to highlight those outcomes.
Questions? Want to use staff? Maybe you thought we were staff? I don't have any questions on the statement of motion.
Um, I'll move to file number twenty-two twenty-seven, Schweiger ADU conditional use permit, lots five and six, block eleven, Twin Lakes.
Any further questions?
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I just have one other, I just ask, um, I put these packets, so we got our train of thought, and you may have heard that, I think this is such a great idea. Um, to do the official action record and to, of course, the signature motion, but also that the staff report get reported. So that it goes through a great institutional memory. And so that when you just pull the actual record into the conditions, which you have no basis on why, um, now looking forward, we'll always be, I know it'll be a bigger recording, but it will be all inclusive of the allocation. So I'll review with these as guides. And then I'll pop back up and review the actual record. This is the entire spectrum. And I'll pop back up with one between the two.
Thanks, Dan, thank you, Shannon. Okay. Moving on, we are on, um, item number five under new business. We're just ordered for the county to join I C L E I, Local Governments for Sustainability, presented by County Government and Government. Tim, you are welcome to come on.
Right, they're gonna pass the Butler Commission.
Oh, okay, sounds good. Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Shannon, thanks so much.
So just quickly, the first order, it's a one thousand two hundred dollars. The organization, so it's called Airing, um, it's the International Council, the Local Environmental Initiatives Committee Council. Um, they actually don't put their acronym, their full name up on the website. They've been around since the early nineties and they're the thing, um, organization that supports local municipalities around the world on sustainability, environmental initiatives. And the reason this is, is coming up now is that in particular, one of the benefits of membership is they have strong support for doing greenhouse gas emissions inventory. Um, and that would give us a baseline for any, um, climate benefits of any project. So for example, our recent C dot and O F applications, and one of the criteria is if they're climate benefit. That was also on the Eden Charter application to put in, and this can be valuation criteria, if not primary purpose for a lot of grants we put in for. So just having that greenhouse gas emissions inventory in place to see the best practice. And that's, that's how you demonstrate that. So it would be a lot more expensive to consult or contract that out. Right, there are a number of other benefits like that, they provide a lot of access to these studies. To base. So I think it's, yeah, really for us, especially not having sort of sustainability or environmental department. Oh, yeah, but also, I mean, like, we also factor into the work that Mike are wearing. That, and again, sort of be a baseline of benefits. So I go, productions are
Could they assist us with looking into some more samples? Should we do this or what?
I, I don't know a hundred percent, like, I didn't look into that. But I mean, to the extent that all their other member institutions, you know, member entities have done those projects, they're willing to, they usually have access to. So I certainly answered, yes, I don't know exactly what my is.
Okay.
And they also, you know, they work on climate resilience and back from adaptation. But yet again, this came to us through, it, 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 it's like, C four, it's the most cost effective way to get a local rather than contracting with a private, roughly ten K or more.
Okay. So the membership doesn't, this won't, they won't, they'll provide that when you remember and you reference that to us. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so the membership opens up, you know, that before I already do this.
Yeah. If y'all have a copy of the, the purchase or say that, so for the record, International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives.
I don't have any questions. Looks good. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, with C four. It's supposed to be with C four or with the organization? Cause what, there's some added for the organization. And so I just made a note in partnership with Cloud City Conservation Center.
Yes, I guess it's, it's with my understanding, it's like C four with the, it helps us submit the application and then, you know, we would be, we would be best money just for, to pay for our membership. So it's not, we were it'll be that slight best three of this before.
And so, yeah, that's somebody's with the organization in partnership. We'll see, cause the information you got was from organizations said, and then once the membership is paid for, then Emily could engage in stuff. So I thought the county, it's gonna be the county's membership, that if you partnering with C four, it'll be that.
In, so I
No, it would be, I don't know, that's, that's what I thought it was gonna be, the county's membership, but you were gonna partner with C four. But I, that, I didn't have, I only had a small group.
Well, sorry, let's clarify that, cause I'm not, now that you say it, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I want to prove it. Yeah, figure out the details and make sure that the, the answer is correct.
And I think significantly, either way, we get access to that service. Okay, but, yeah.
Yeah, it's like, cause the other things are just to be, obviously, it's
Yeah.
I'd rather a state, a county, because I really don't work to request them and then we go request Yeah, so what we could do is it could be the county's, county's membership, and then we could do an NOU with Cloud City Conservation Center for them to administer it. And they do, yeah, they engage with, yeah, they can be the county's H P R project.
And we can, yeah. Okay.
So I think that the way it's right?
Yeah.
If that's, yeah, if y'all are okay with that approach to it, unless we need to clarify.
So it would be us paying for the prescription. And then we would give them all So then this is the way this travels.
Okay, yeah, yeah, you go that approach and then I can reach out to, and we have, we're super simple, and I'll be able to down to
Okay.
Uh, I'll move to the purchase order for the two years membership for joining I C L E I that, Local Governments for Sustainability.
Any further questions? And, and Ian, thank you for doing this.
I don't think the, well, it's the
All of them in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all so much for that. Okay. Um, now we're moving into number six, which is the presentation of an interim government agreement, which will be the city level on a creation. Tim, do you want to just take a five minute break and get Jackie for us? So we're just gonna break for about five minutes and then we're going to, um, we'll be back to when our housing director comes in so that we can have this discussion. Okay, so for the sake of time, we're going to go ahead and proceed with the last item on our agenda, which is the regional housing authority I G A. And our director of housing, Jackie, will join us shortly as soon as she's. Done working with clients. So with that, I don't know, Tim and Chris, if you want to come up to the table, you're welcome to.
Wait, I'm not looking at you, but you have the space up there.
Tim, if you want to come up, you're welcome to find a seat where we'd like. And I'll step out. Okay.
So in your packets is the latest red line version between county and city attorneys. That had the. The latest feedback from the board and city council in there. Um, but there's nothing in it. From my perspective that. It bothers them or arbitrary or anything like that. The only concern that I do have is that city council only wants to provide one year. Of funding towards the housing authority. In my opinion, I would. I would suggest that. The B O T C. Permanent amount of time similar to the first I G A, I believe that had a five year agreement, funding agreement in it. Because thinking through this strategically. You know, we want. We've come a very far way in showing our commitment to addressing the housing crisis in our community, but funding this new regional housing authority for one year. Will not get us housing because I see this as two scenarios. So if we do get the, um, if we do get the. Dola grant, um, the county's funding will go toward that. Can be the matching dollar to three hundred thousand dollars. So in total. So that in the city's contribution will be a hundred thousand dollars, who has one point four million dollars to build out the infrastructure. That the identified sites. However, if we do not get the Dola grant. So then the county can say that they're matching grant with goat parts, the housing authority. But then that just leaves a new organization in our community with about four hundred thousand dollars, which can go. Um, in some ways move forward on other housing programs. But in other ways, it really hamper the new organization before they can run a valid initiatives to have a larger dedicated stream of funding. And also keep in mind that most all of the housing programs. That the housing authority can. Provide. So from first time home buyers. To. Deed restriction purchasing programs like those, those kind of programs can be a revenue stream. It won't be a large revenue stream, but can be revenue stream for the housing authority. However, within the first, let's say, one to three years, if there's not a steady in the funding from the city and county, then. We're not going to be able to implement any of those things. Or at least from my perspective, that the new regional housing authority board would have a challenging time with constrained funding. To be able to expand out these other housing programs. Um, I know that the ultimate goal is. Building housing, which is the primary purpose of the regional housing authority. However, get back to the scenario, if we get the Dola grant, if we do not get the Dola grant. You know, those will be focused. On the infrastructure cost for those parcels. But also we want all of these other programs that housing authorities be able to create and to be able to help our community. In other ways aside from this vertical construction. So that and Chris, I don't know from, from the legal perspective, if you have comments from. The latest feedback from the city attorney.
Well, and so the. What she sent me last week, you know, I thought we wanted to look at and Michael tweeted a little bit. I don't think that Michael tweeted a little bit, but I'll wave here back in terms of the back one. Back on one year. Or if there were any other changes to that red line version. And so. Heard anything else since my comments and staff. So. It is, I, it is not just like these.
It is, yeah.
I did not think we were, the only potentially substantive change would be on the budget stuff. The rest of it, I think we're.
I would agree. That's all I saw as well.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, the issue, issue we have is, and I think that, you know, Chad started to describe it. Is, uh, the way the budget is, is currently structured. If you don't get the grant. Then there's nothing here that says that the county has any obligation. Either in year one, year two, or, or in the future. Three hundred thousand dollars is moved. Anything in there that I'm missing that says that that three hundred thousand dollars is being obligated or the hundred thousand dollars from the city?
Um. I don't, but I think, I think, I think. What we want. You are correct, I mean. But I think what we are trying to discuss is. Obligating funds in the future regardless of whether or not we get the grant funding so that we don't have to just focus on vertical construction and development projects, but. You know, are, are supporting the other programs, especially those that generate revenue and add to expanding services. So I think that was our question from the last city council meeting.
So as you can tell, the process was pretty simple. We want to see what happens with the grant before we obligate to year two. In the first year, if we don't get the grant, the city is obligated a hundred and forty thousand dollars against twenty six thousand dollars for the, for the county. Really don't have a problem with that. Why not have a problem with it in year two? If it's in perpetuity, then I don't know what that means in. In terms of who's obligated to support the housing authority. At that point, it would be, the vast majority would be the city under two A.
So the, the thought is really understanding what the backup funding is, should the Dola grant not.
Right, exactly. So what, what Tim just described is the first I heard of that. Uh, in terms of, okay, maybe we do obligate that additional three hundred thousand or one hundred thousand. Uh, in, in future years for, for different purposes. And maybe even in year one, if we don't get the grant. I think that would go a long ways towards making this. Keeping in mind that every year has to be, you know, appropriation issue. Just because that's the way city and county governments work.
Right, right. I, I think, um. Really for me, um. You know, the Dola grant is kind of like cherry on top of, we're able to put infrastructure into all those properties. And I think. You know, it's really important to also not overlook the county's investment in providing the land to the regional housing authority. Because we could give that to a private investor, right? We want to make sure that. That property is leveraged to its highest fullest potential, right? And so I think. We also have to look at the economic conditions of what's going to happen in the next couple of years as well. And so if we're not able to get the Dola grant, I really don't want this to be getting in the water and to have another opportunity. To undertake vertical construction where the regional housing authority has the ability to pivot to other housing programs. Like maybe it's an educational program to keep people out of foreclosure if there's an economic recession or whatever. But maybe that's where the housing authority pivots based on economic conditions that are outside of our control. I don't know.
Um, we, I mean, way it reads right now in terms of revenue. So already so provided minimum funding for the, for the beginning of September one, twenty twenty to December thirty one, twenty twenty three. Uh, and you know, so. I was wondering since it starts up in the one, some of the help that ran through. Pat, you know, twenty twenty, what's it, June? Up in August, twenty twenty, of course, it's a jab, it's a year three, you know, kind of confirmed with that. Cause right now, wait, it runs through the next year anyway.
And let me clarify, it sounds like the showstopper is that the city only was obligated to the first year. Is that, is that what I'm reading?
That was the big concern, yes.
Okay.
Drop back.
So, so the city is ready to, to, you know, approve the I G A tonight based on the one year. If that's not acceptable, it seems like we'll put ourselves in a box here. Uh, it's going to be difficult to meet the timeline. Because we need, we need for this I G A to be part of city and county to, to meet the schedule. You know, for this, this September first, uh, at least a letter of intent to apply. Oh.
No, no, and I think, I like to, I mean, cities, so there's like, it's a little nuanced in my head, at least in the, the commitment. Of cities to A, you have to A.
Right.
And that's a established funding mechanism, that's committed to covering, but maybe. And, and maybe our, all of our assumption is that it's going to take more than two A. So like, you know, get up and running. And so maybe in. Conversation with council, it was like, well, of course we're committed, we've got two A. And I think maybe there's just a, just. Well, actually adding, you know.
Well, the reason that, I mean, the reason we're having this discussion is because city council approved only one year of funding, which changed the initial projected budget. Which is how, um, the city and county attorneys have written the. The I G A is based on the initial projected budget, which is what city council. Approved at the last. Board meeting, but then, you know, we didn't have, we weren't given the opportunity to negotiate or discuss it at the meeting. So it's just trying to think long term and being more strategic and thinking about setting up this new board and this new entity in our community. I mean, my recommendation to the board is to think about. You know, committing or setting aside funding then. To dedicate to the regional housing authority. For. You know, projected year, you know, one, two, and three. And having that set aside.
And I, I still think too, I mean, I think we can make kind of a general, but I really like the idea also as things evolve of. Saying, okay, we need three hundred thousand for this Dola grant. And then like going project by project of maybe where annually we want to focus the funding towards. And I, and I know that's not. I don't mean not to. I think the housing authority is going, going to develop their priorities, I mean, year by year. But I think somehow we could say, and Michael, you're in joined us, maybe you could comment on this too, but we could say. Okay, great. And eighty percent of our funds are probably going to go to vertical construction. These, this particular project for year one, two, perhaps three. And we also, but we also love. A big portion of it to go towards the development of other projects that are really gonna, the programs that are really gonna. Housing authority and make sure that that happens. That this regardless, right?
So the budget that's being presented is what's going to be presented in the door, right?
Uh, in that letter of intent, yes, would be the one, this, um, exhibit A, which you can't read, it's a little fuzzy, but there's no one.
So if the city's determined to. The first year. Make up the difference. You to make the application complete? Or does that change the whole perspective of the application or?
Currently for year. Number twenty three. It would contribute seventy thousand, which is the two A. And then that their third of the housing director salary, the county would provide the twenty six thousand in operating. Um, there's the projected leftover two A, which is seventy thousand. The city grant match is one hundred thousand, county grant matches three hundred thousand. Twenty twenty four. Two A sitting house, city housing director contribution. County operating contribution of twenty six K and then the projected leftover of two A is seventy thousand. So it would be. I got a hundred and sixty eight.
Probably need to pick up a hundred and sixty eight thousand in the grant application. Michael, am I understanding that correctly?
Well, can you repeat the question? Sorry, I.
So. We're wanting to, we're submitting I G A and the budget with the grant application to Dola, correct?
Yeah.
Only has. Uh, confirmed or committed to year one funding. Will we have to change that budget for the county to pick up the additional hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars in year two?
Um, well, I don't think they. So I, maybe, maybe, maybe back up real quick and the, the I G A, the way it's written. Um, and I think what, what caused this to go a little sideways with, at the meeting. Since Jeff and Kim were only, and Jackie were there. The, the, the issue I think the council brought up was a kind of impermeability commitment to the two A funds to the regional housing authority. And then they settled on one year, which I think. Kind of, uh, is put us in this, in this conversation. But if you actually read the way the I G A is written. For twenty twenty four, so twenty twenty three, the, the I G A funds the regional housing authority. In twenty twenty four, it would be the obligation of the board of directors of the regional housing authority to approach both the city and county at budget time to make those requests for operating. And that's the way it reads. So it's, it's basically. On a yearly basis, that board would be coming to you with their, with basically a work plan for the year and their budget. Um, so it's not. The way that's written and Chris, you could probably chime in a little bit on how that exactly rewarded, but that's the way, what, the way I read it. In practicality, I understand Tim's point of, let's make a, I mean, this is the biggest pressing issue facing Lake County and the city of Leadville. Let's, let's commit to the staff that they're going to have a job for more than a year, right? Like Jackie, giving Jackie some assurance that she has more than one year of funding. Is, is, uh, is definitely up there as far as my concerns too for Jackie. But the bigger piece of the puzzle is, is the, is the future funding. As it relates, as, as a board of directors coming to both elected officials bodies asking for money in the twenty twenty four budget. So that's the way I read it. Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's basically the obligation of the board in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty four to come before the B O C C and council for the funding request.
Yes, that's correct. The, the way it reads, it runs through December twenty twenty three. And so there's no provision for funding after December twenty twenty three.
So. But, but Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I read it is, is states in the I G A that the, the board can come before the B O C C and city council for twenty twenty four.
Yeah, I mean, it. I was gonna say, yeah, that definitely, that, I think that's. That's expected, but I think what Tim was hoping for is more of a cushion and, and commitment to know that you've got the funding through the first three years.
Regardless of the.
The Dola branch, yeah.
And I, and I completely understand that. I just wanted to make sure though, that. That we stated that the way that was read or the way I read that, so.
Without changing this I G A's, we would pass. I think it's going to make sense to come to city council and also for it, say, this is a good paid effort. The I G A is written as a renegotiation at the end of twenty twenty three anyway. But we have to turn in something for this Dola grant that shows them a good faith effort. And so the, the budget almost becomes, we can present this, you know, in its current form. Uh, on September first, uh, for, for the, the purposes of the Dola grant. And still have a good faith effort on both parties, knowing that the future is, is a little bit uncertain.
But I, if you look at the. I sent you, they're not in your packet, um. Dola grading document and then Dola, you know, they're walking through what they're exactly looking for. I mean, if I sat on the review committee at Dola, I would see that the city of Leadville and Lake County contributed one year of funding to something, but nothing else. Like, I don't know. But that does show, um.
I think we can.
Commitment to addressing, to addressing the housing crisis in the community. It looks like we're just going after one grant.
But I think we can. Highlight two A. Not necessarily having the city or the council's decision of exactly where all of that available funding is going. I think we can include that in the grant application of the city's effort to contribute. And perhaps on top of that, um, I mean, we can definitely put to this grant. And then the county goes to their separate resolution and say, hey, we've decided we want a grant between two hundred and forty thousand dollars annually over the next three years. That amount and the direct allocation to the housing authority shall be determined once the housing authority is established. And specific programs and requests may come to the board. That, Michael, did that sound fair?
Yeah, it's a, with Dola, if you read their qualified strategies, there's two strategies that specifically. What, what you guys were just discussing, talk about a dedicated funding source. And what you have in the city's two A ballot initiative is a, you can directly point to a dedicated funding source, right? It's a tax initiative that was passed to fund affordable housing. And so that checks two really big qualified strategy boxes. And the commitment to the city to fund the regional housing authority with two A funds is how you tie. Tie that funding to those two qualified strategies. So that, so basically. What it, what it's saying, when, when I make the, the pitch to Dola to make a qualified strategy, what I would be saying is that. By this, by the city dedicating two A funds, they have, they have a dedicating funding stream that is going to help subsidize the development of affordable housing. As it relates to infrastructure costs, uh, which is one, one of the programs. And the second being with a, as it relates to fees associated, which can be tap fees. Or other development fees like surveying costs, et cetera, to, to leverage public lands. So it's really, Tim is on to what Tim is stating is, is right on, is that. Having the I G A make a little bit stronger of a statement around those two A funds certainly helps me make the case to Dola that this isn't to say. Hey, we put this I G A together to come after this Dola grant. And if you don't get it, you know, it really was, this is really isn't something that we're thinking about long term. Um, which I think Tim's point is well founded. I know that's not the case, but, uh, it, you know, so I don't know how. If we could get creative in that, in that section of the I G A and whether, what the city would be comfortable with making a statement of. Basically saying that, maybe we could strengthen it, um, by saying something along the lines of. That it, you know, future boards will bring back requests for future use of two A funds and county operational funds. A, a statement like that, Chris, might help strengthen that argument.
But, but I'm sorry, I mean, I, I thought we already had. But, but I'm sorry, I, I thought we already had language a little bit like what you just said, Michael. And sorry, I don't know the I G A pulled up in front of me, but I thought there was language about in subsequent years.
Yeah, it, it essentially says, um, the part, in that same section, I was reading before. The parties, um, acknowledge such timing, not be adequate from the authority. Cheers and funding for each party shall be subject to annual availability and appropriation by the bodies.
So I mean, uh, with that in there, I feel like maybe we could put something along to what Sarah was trying to say, like, that's a stronger verbative. The letter of intent section or like application preamble or something saying like, hey, like. We, you know, you know, everything we just talked about here, like, we don't know, we, we don't know if we have the Dola grant or anything like that, you know?
Yeah.
And. I, I don't know, I just think we can say something that's really honest. Like, we don't know how much money we need to put in this thing, because we don't have a strategic plan moving forward, because they don't exist yet. But we've set up this I G A where they're gonna, you know, the new board is gonna come before city and county. In our next budget year and. You know, something better than we'll figure it out, but like. Now, I think we can, anyway, rather than starting, trying to get to lever in the I G A language.
Yeah.
I think in the application or letter of intent. Honestly say, you know, this thing's gonna need money.
Yeah, I don't know, it's inadequate in subsequent years. That's a statement, it, it's part of the, of the funding pair of, of resources revenue.
Um, yeah, and, and we don't know how soon it, you know. One or two years or ten years before the new board exercises its taxing authority.
Yeah.
We just don't, we just don't know that. But what, something I'm hearing from, from Tim and, and Michael.
Is that if we, if we submit this budget, it's not gonna work yet. You know, uh, in terms of, of our, our, our commitment past twenty twenty-three. And I, I get that. I just wish we'd been having this conversation long before now, because now we're on, we need to give this thing passed.
Well, I think this was originally a five-year.
Yeah, that's what was originally presented, and then that's when, I mean, back when it was shut down to the, just the initial.
And then the council left meeting. When they, you started the one year, so that's kind of where this came, the.
Yeah. But, yeah. Good one, Michael.
Well, there's two, there's two things that come to effect here too, the. The. The Dola funds, if, if awarded are subject to twenty, they have to be expended by twenty twenty-four. So I think when you, when you think about the, um, June twenty twenty-four. So I think when you think about this as, in the light that Tim put on this of, of. How do we strengthen this language a little bit? Even the, even a two-year commitment, um, to the housing authority. Would run through the grant cycle. Uh, and so it would show that the, that the city and county have committed to. Um. Having a functional housing authority through, you know, through the.
Yeah.
Through the project award.
That, and that's precisely why I brought up the plans go, hey, can we change instead of having the, having it say the initial funding term is through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Take it to June twenty twenty-four.
Because that's the funding cycle for the grant.
Yeah, that's, that's why I brought that up. That was something that might be.
That's a way to change and, and it does really change the obligation, I guess, to every point. What do we do with this budget? Do we need to change this budget in terms of the subsequent year? And a commitment from the city and county over and above two A in year two in twenty twenty-four. Uh, rhetorical nature, I'm not sure if we're in a position to make that change here and in the season.
Well, here's. So here's what Tim and I have been going about, Michael, like, we, we're, we're just talking about the grant funding and the infrastructure piece. When we, if we were awarded the Dola grant, we have to build housing between eighty and one hundred and forty A M I. What is the calculation based on the sites of the school, like the infill sites, I'll call them. And the total units down there. And what we can even build and what subsidies the county and the city are gonna have to put.
Yeah, I think that, that's impossible, that's an impossible answer, um.
But it's gonna be a hard number, right? Like.
Well, no, I, I, I don't, I, at a hundred and forty percent, I think that, again, wh- which. What I would say is that when you look at those, if you look across the block. From A Street, that, that, that's your comp, right? That just sold. And that's what's on the market right now. And so obviously they had, I believe that property sold for roughly, what is it called? A million dollars? And then they had, they have infrastructure costs that, that went into that. So when you look at when those houses start pop, start, start to pop out of the dirt and on the free market and they're in the six to seven hundred thousand. Range, what I, I guess my point in bringing those up is you can deduct. Land costs and utility costs, because that's what we will, that's the baked in affordability that we already have done. So, um, and then also. Add into the fact that for every one unit they're building, or every two units they're building over there, we'll be, be building a duplex or a triplex, right? So there's some economies of scale and some savings on how, how we can construct. I, I do think that a for-sale product. Is, there's gonna need to be additional subsidies, but I don't think they're gonna be as large. Once we get those, those major utilities to the, to the site. I mean, if you actually go to the, if you go to the, can I share a screen?
I think so.
Let me, sorry, let me pull up, it actually, can you, one quick second, I'll, I'll, you open it and then.
You should be able to share a screen.
So. I'll pull up just one of the. This is the county site on Fourth Street. This is the water main, so. Um, this is the cost to submit. So, so this is, this, this cost right here, Sarah. Is the, from Terratech, this is the infrastructure cost, two eighty-one. This is for the, and this property, this is for the water main. And then was buried in that, beyond that two eighty-one, there's, um, design and planning fees, there's contingency. So really, this is about three fifty, once you add in the fees that are buried in here. What's not in here is the fees to bring utilities from the, from the main to each of the properties. This is the cost right now that when we go to develop. Is, is the foundation cost plus any tap fees we owe per unit. To the, the water and sand districts, right? So what we've done hypothetically is we basically have eaten this cost per unit. Or this cost per site, which is about four hundred per site. Out of the total cost plus, we've also taken away any land costs that will be passed on to additional buyers. So it's a, it's a, it's a pretty substantial subsidy. It's about fifty to sixty thousand dollars a unit. That this, if we were successful in, in doing this between the public land donations. And the utilities being put on site, that we're able to buy down on, buy down on each of these units. So. I think we can hit affordability. There's, there's certainly gonna be some trade-offs of trying to do a couple more units at one forty. The buy-down cost for the units that we try to market at eighty percent, right? And that's for a developer, and also who knows where the red will be in twenty twenty-four when we go to break ground on construction costs. But, um, that's, that's really the theory behind how we, how we're approaching this is. That we are going to have eaten a significant chunk of what it would cost to make those three sites. Go vertical to tune about fifty to sixty thousand dollars a pop per unit, um, for this project. So it's not insignificant. And I certainly think, and I can say this, I, with that kind of subsidy, I've been able to, in my career, time and time again, leverage. Uh, those properties and those utilities availability to get units affordable to the, to the, for homeownership. Uh, and then there's also the possibility, because these sites are gonna render seventy to eighty units. You could actually potentially go after a state funder, uh, like a CHAF program to do rentals. Uh, because of the density that those sites can hold. So there's, there's certainly the ability to potentially pursue a light tech project on one of those sites. Or a larger rental project as a phase two. So i- it's, but the, the, the issue will always be for any of those developers. Is that those utility main extensions are killer when you look at the, and the land costs are killer to trying to do any project. Makes sense?
Well, I'm sorry, I always forget about factoring the real property value of what the county is contributing to.
Well, that is, so that is helpful, Michael, but I, I. I'll bring it back and then I, I will stop, but that is. That is all for one project, it's those three infill sites, so Article Two, the power. There's nothing there that city and county are contributing to, to fund. First-time homebuyer education, mobile home rehab, deed restriction, senior housing, homeless and emergency housing services. Which a lot of those things are, you know, um. Uh, so there's no, there's no other commitment to actually having the housing authority do anything aside from the three infill sites. Yeah.
Uh, I mean, can we, so the, so this. Well, and that's what I was, I was trying to ask, but the, the, it was more like, oh, that's, because that's a full extra year, and I think. I'm hearing, maybe we can convince city council to commit for the grant cycle that would go through June twenty twenty-four. But perhaps.
I think Brazilian is a good faith after, for the, for the, the, the purpose of getting this grant. Applied for committing to two years is absolutely, and it's two A money required.
So can we change that to December twenty twenty-four?
I, I think we should.
Good. Well, is it above, it's above two A money though, right? Because the two, the, the remainder of two A is like seventy-ish grand, yeah.
Well, that's all two A money, everything in there. So there's the seventy thousand for, for, uh, the housing director and the additional seventy thousand, which is. Just an approximation based on two hundred and forty thousand dollars in, in, uh, revenue. Pro to a total, leaves about seventy. We're actually afraid we might be pushing up against three hundred thousand this year. It scares me. Because we, we, we put three hundred thousand there, because we said there's no way it could ever go over that. And now we're not so sure, and if it goes over three hundred thousand, we have a real problem. Because then we have to return everything over three hundred thousand to each of those hundred and forty-one. Uh, people who paid into that. Uh, so it's actually a hu- about a hundred and fifty. Uh, then, yeah, that would be a nightmare. No, nonetheless, hope, hope that doesn't happen. So I, I, I think we can be looking at a good big effort, for certainly two years. And, and then December of twenty twenty-four to make this, this, uh.
I think it, I think it demonstrates a lot to the state that like, even if you don't fit the grant, we're still moving forward with some housing work. Which I think is really important to funders regardless, um. And I think if we miss this initial grant cycle, it sets us up well for, for secondary or supplemental grants.
My only concern, and it's been expressed, is if, if nothing is in there in year two for the city and county. With a hundred thousand or three hundred thousand, then what does that look like, uh, in terms of the grant request? I don't know.
If no funds are committed?
If no funds are committed in year two.
Yeah.
In other words, as, as we pointed out, are we putting all regs in one basket? We're only going after this grant, and we don't have a commitment into the future to a, you know, to some of that.
Right. No, and I, I mean, I think we could, I think we could consider a resolution that our next meeting, this month. To say, yes, we're committed to. Or whatever amount through twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, or whatever.
That's how budgets get through twenty twenty-four, or twenty twenty-four, with the contributions, the existing budget.
Right, but with zeros for the, the grant match.
Or the matches, yeah.
Because there's no, there's no grant. But we can, yeah.
Yeah, just.
And.
That's already in there.
That's, yeah, I was gonna say, carry on, the, the, the county operating contribution, city projected left of the two A and city grant. That will. Two A, operating contribution, county and city projected leftover two A, there, those are all under twenty twenty-four. It's just the match and stuff, just grant and grant funding and stuff.
But I think what we're talking about is going past twenty-four, right?
So.
Through the end of twenty-four.
Oh, thank you.
So. So this shows for twenty twenty-four, this shows what was originally proposed at, at the last meeting. This shows the, the operating commitment for twenty twenty-four from both entities. And then the only thing I will say is that keep in mind that the total grant match. For the, for the Dola grant is anticipated to be three hundred thousand. So there is an additional hundred thousand between these two numbers sitting there. For things like a geo-tech study for potential, um, programming stuff that Tim brought up. You know, one of the biggest programs that I think we need to really pursue, uh, hot and heavy. Because it'll help the Laurel parcel as well is, uh, down payment assistance. And so there would be a hundred thousand dollars in there for programming, um, that would assist, uh, beyond that, that isn't. You know, this is, that is beyond what the Dola grant will require.
Can we, can, would it make sense to split those two numbers, one hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, across the two years? And add a line item that says.
You can't do, you, you can't do that, because the Dola grant will require when, if we're selected to move on after September first. Will require a resolution, uh, dedicating, basically, it'll need a, you, you'll have to show that you can supply the. In your twenty twenty-three budget, uh, three hundred thousand are matched. But what we, but what we could do is we could move, I mean, we, what we could do is we could make this two hundred. Um, and then we can make this one hundred for year two. And I think, uh. That, I mean, it, it, it doesn't change the outcomes of the numbers, but what it does do is it shows that the county's commitment to twenty twenty-four. And seeing carryover funds.
And so if we, if we go down this path, though, extending to December twenty twenty-four, I think the proportional share funding. Figures need to be changed in the I G A, Michael.
I, yeah. They would just, the only, the only update to the number would be to add the additional, we'd, we'd have to add to the two totals, these two additional. So it'd be another hundred and forty from the city, and it'd be another twenty, twenty-six from the county. In those numbers.
But then, but we should add a line item, because it's not, it's really.
So what you do is put it in the county operating contribution instead of twenty-six, do a hundred and twenty-six. For your budget, if you go over to.
Yeah, Michael, in county operating contribution, it says the twenty-six thousand and add an additional hundred thousand. No, that, that's. We want to keep that at three hundred.
So that, that makes your match four hundred.
That's fine.
Well, no, 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 because you put the hundred up in the, in the operating contribution.
But we want to keep the three hundred thousand.
Well, you're.
In the one hundred, why not put it, make it a matching one twenty-six of years then?
That, this, this just. That, that, that just de-obligates it from a grant, what Chris is saying, I agree with, it just de-obligates it from the Dola grant match. And it allows it to be flexible and operating, the extra hundred thousand that you're putting in.
Yeah, so put in twenty twenty-three, make it a hundred and twenty-six county operating contribution for both, for both twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. That way you're still contributing three hundred thousand, but you only need two hundred of that for the, you, you DOL match.
Well, then you, that, that's added an extra hundred thousand, Chris, because then they're at four, four hundred.
I, this is, sorry, so I, I, so, so to me, one of the issues is like, we have all these other programs, like you pointed out. That the housing authority hopefully will run, so I'm not, that we need to add another line. It's like, you know, other programs, future programs, you know, and.
And put the hundred thousand.
And we put a hundred thousand there, or fifty and fifty or something. And, and put a big asterisk, like, you know, T V D based on. You know, housing authorities, the plan and, and annual budget discussions with city, county, and other contributing. So, and that's not our, our, the other language, you understand, there's more stuff that's gonna be coming here. Rather than stuff that is operating, because operating means like that core. You know, just so the thing doesn't implode. You know, that's keeping the doors open.
So Jeff, that's what it would look like for, if we did it that way. And I, and I will say, just keep in mind, bear in mind, that the whole reason this was set up in this way was that. As for operations, the current IGA that you do have as funding the housing director position. When we did this buzz, budget analysis, it didn't require any additional funds beyond beyond what was was committed in that. So so this, these additional two A funds and these additional commitments, what is really showing the community here, which I think is great. Is that you guys are invested in beyond just this one project, but also having some additional funds to go after. Home buyer, um home buyer down payment assistance, rehabilitation. Um all those other programs that we talked about, senior housing, rehabilitation, um those types of programs that can, that can be um leveraged through. Through grant dollars as well. So it's, it really does provide some additional capacity right off the bat.
But I mean, let's just put like a huge honk and asterisk, like you know that, I mean, that's just general placeholder to show that we know. We that more money has to go into this housing authority.
I feel like it should be a hundred thousand. Each year.
But I think that's not enough either.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Put a, put a hundred thousand in there each year.
You want me to change this to a hundred or you want me to add these to a hundred?
You want to change both fifty thousands to one hundred thousands?
Yeah.
And that will show, come back to the community of what else is provided in board. The ability to do something aside from just seeking funding.
I don't want to get trapped in that continual cycle of trying to hunt for grant dollars to keep this moment.
You know, I think when you, this is presented to the, to city council tonight, I think this will show as well that. I think there was concern, I, Greg, I don't want to speak for city council, but I think this really shows the the cat, the city. Um if we'd go with this proposed budget that's on the screen, that, you know, that, that, that two year commitment of leftover two A funds. Is being, is being matched by the county. Greg, do you think that's going to help with the perception of the city council?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. But here, the other thing I would say is, this is. This is a prospective budget for Dola's consideration. What we do next year will be up to us.
Yeah.
You know, so I don't want to get too, too far down that road quite yet, but the truth of the matter is, we all, we all agree. None of this is going to be enough.
But it's also, it's not just for Dola. It is when you guys appoint the new board members for the regional housing authority. And if you sat me on a board and I have one year of funding, what am I going to do? We all create funding. I'm not going to focus on housing.
Well, and I I just, I think this will set the new board up nicely.
It gives, it's more stuff.
So but I would want you really figure a new board, like, don't, don't write me a plan constrained by that budget.
Right.
You know, write me a plan and come talk about what, I mean, it should be constrained by some better reality, but like, you know, I mean. Don't think in twenty twenty four, you can't conceive of spending more money than what's in that column.
Well, if you look at this budget, they're conceiving of spending a lot more money. It's not just, we're only looking at that, that section of the city and county. There's some huge numbers in there.
And so, yeah, so speaking of that, one of the things I need, I need the updated numbers to plug in for the initial funding term for that. Too, because the way it's in the IGA now, it's only, only listed for the amounts for twenty twenty three. At three hundred and twenty six thousand for that county and two hundred and forty for the city of Leadville.
So my, my, can you send that to Chris?
I can, Chris, do you want to, do we need to, looking at the IGA, do we? Sorry, I'm gonna stop sharing, share. So do we want to, do we want to separate this, this section out into two sections? Or do we want to make?
So what I did in the, the paragraph above that was I just changed the definition of the initial funding term to run to December thirty first, twenty twenty four. So I think all we need to do is update the numbers in the section where we have the dollars listed.
Well, do you want to, do you want to call it out to tie, tie the hands of the board and council and the regional housing authority that. This goes to Dola match, this other is for housing programs.
If that's what y'all need, need to do, the um.
I think, I think we could add, Chris, I think we could add, have these numbers updated with the numbers we just discussed with. So this would reflect the additional hundred thousand from the county.
Budget in the first paragraph up there, you know, because it talks about um the initial projected budget. Um attached as exhibit A. So once the numbers are changed in that budget. It's attached here, and that's why I thought we only needed to do the the totals.
Yeah. The land in there?
You know, the land, the land, you gotta, you're gonna have to do as a separate thing. Uh we can talk about that because I'm actually. That I've had to cross that bridge in my mind this week because of the school district presentation on Monday. I think you're, you're going to, there's multiple ways, let's not open up that can of worms. I'll address it after we finish this. How about that? We sit on, sit on side chat us.
Okay, it's not, there's some other way you're gonna.
I I think you need, I think both, for instance, with the school district and with the county, when you dedicate that. Uh through, you want, you're going to want a land donation agreement with the regional housing authority and. Um what I would suggest that you do is you attach a restrictive covenant uh on the conveyance entitled to the regional housing authority. That the BOCC on your two parcels would have, and I'm going to write, make the same recommendation to the school district. That you, we would set forth the terms in the restrictive land use covenant of how the land can be used and, you know, hypothetically would say. That this land shall be used for uh affordable housing at a price, at a for, for sale price points of a hundred and forty percent AMI. Or rental price points at eighty percent AMI or less in perpetuity.
Okay.
Um that, 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 that just prevents like. The nuclear option of a regional housing authority board saying, oh, we could sell this property for a million bucks and put a million dollars in our account to do programming.
Okay. Um, the, another kind of unrelated question, does the, the Dola grant. And the documents are saying affordable housing, can we say affordable and workforce?
We define that in the IGA up above to be very inclusive.
Yeah, okay, and it's Christian, I called that out. Yeah, and so if a definition was added in.
Including with somehow being limited to affordable housing, tailor housing, community housing, workforce, so.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. So that permission cannot be construed based on that some of the power that these.
Okay, yeah.
So Chris, you need me to give you those two updated numbers?
Yeah, I just need the numbers to plug in in that four point five live for the um proportional shares of funding.
Okay, I'll get you that in an email here shortly. Um and so I just want to. It's real quick, want to confirm that I have the numbers right, since we kind of changed them around. So what this is saying right now and what will bring forth the city council is. That the city continues on with their current housing director contribution of seventy thousand. In both twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, that this county continues its operating contribution as per the IGA of twenty six thousand in twenty twenty three, twenty four. That the city would commit to the remaining funds um left over of seventy thousand in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. That both the city, the city would provide a hundred thousand dollar grant match for the Dola grant and the county would provide two hundred. And that the county would contribute in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, an additional hundred thousand um in each year for programming. Or other functions.
Thanks, that's. Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, I can certainly um add those up and actually.
Well, there's spreadsheet backup.
Oh, sorry, I'm not sharing. My bad. Sorry, that was bad, bad consultant. Um, okay.
I have a question about number of board members.
Seven, the debate between the attorneys on term one.
Well, that just, as I was saying. Oh, for y'all. Apparently said seven, and then what, somebody reminded me why we took seven, then we're five, then there's, there's like. I get things done. Was, did you need, if that might actually be something. Oh.
And the um super majority. For.
Pat and Charles.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm checking, so that is, how, and and I think it was the majority. It wasn't, because it just says the, that the authority.
Oh, so it's, Michael, what was the reason for having seven people on the board instead of five?
Um, the reason would be, in my opinion, is that you have a couple um groups, like the school district. In particular, or the sand or the water district, if they decide to come to the table with half fee funds. That would give their, especially the school district, uh would give the opportunity for. It would give the assurance to the school board that they have some, a representation if they dedicate, made a land dedication to the project. Or if you have someone else in the community that makes a land dedication to affordable housing, that that opens up additional at large seats. So you have three at large seats.
If we go to five. We only want at large.
So do, but do we not, sorry, do we not have anything specified on those three at large folks, like? School district representation or um district.
No, they're, they're chosen by the other four.
Yeah. So that, that will be discussed, so the first, the first two items on, once the four members of the regional housing authority meet. The, the first, first meeting discussion is going to be the creation of bylaws, which would discuss at large members and then. Um so they can, they, they can talk about that. The second item is going to be a co- employment contract for Jackie. And the third item on there is community guidelines. So those are the first, first three items that new board need to tackle um when they first meet. Does that make sense? And I just, sorry, I'm gonna stop sharing because you can not. I'm, I'm trying to do this while talking and it's not going well.
Because it's not referencing. As the authority, maya levy and. Not to the seat, well, no, but under sales tax, it says that the majority vote of the entire board is required to attend the ballot.
Four point two says the prerequisite for tax levies, the authority should not establish increasing tax on its personate to the voter registry.
But I think we have to, I think we wanted. Sitting down participation to go.
So just copy like the second sentence of four point three.
Oh, yeah. That was.
So you talked about the super majority language.
Because I think we definitely wanted that in Apple learn taxes. More so than like a sales.
Yeah, my, my understanding was it was for any group.
Any tax collection, so if we just put it in bulk, Chris.
So the same language, though.
Yeah.
Just after the person, it's in each four point three and four point four, it's the same sentence.
Yeah, just to add that. Yeah. Okay. Mayor, what are you thinking for seat council tonight?
Well, I. I would love to get this done.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh we did, it's a resolution, we can change all this on the fly, but I'd sure like something put in front of them.
I'm gonna, that's why I'm like. I'm doing this as we go, so as soon as we finish, I'm going to shoot it over to Christiana and Lori.
With our final.
With the, with the changes, yeah, that's, that's why, and all I need from Michael then is the numbers.
Yeah. Yep. Okay, um. Michael, what else do we need to?
So, Chris, so Chris, I got those numbers for you. They're, uh, the two, county two year contribution is four, four, five, two. Four hundred and fifty two thousand.
Right.
And the city's is three eighty, three hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay, great.
And I will send this budget over. Um, I'm getting rid of the two year projected fund balance. So that's not shown in the budget. I'm cleaning this up and then I'll get it over to the. To, to you tonight, Jackie, so that you can update this for the city council meeting.
Sarah, we didn't quite finish your question about.
Oh, yeah. Um.
I don't disagree with the, you know, the larger district representation, just, I just. I, it's the way other board. And, and really, our, our, our folks that we hopefully will rely mostly on to get this work done are. Helping committee staff and then county staff, and the city may have more staff. Um and experts to work in those development committees. I just worry that there's going to be more board members than. You know, like, they're the experts, and they may be some experts that also serve on the development committee, but um. I, yeah, I would think. And our, I mean, our appointments, like our county appointment could be a school district representative. It would have to be a council employee.
Well, you're, I mean, you could, you could also put that person also in the at large, so.
Right, 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 like, yeah, I'm talking about it as for initial members to say. Who do we want the three to be and who do we want them to represent? I think, I don't, yeah, I mean, I have confidence with that conversation. And and Paul Anderson did submit an application, so.
Oh, great.
He's stepping down from the record, um and he, that would be a good, maybe like that.
Okay. Um, what other things?
Uh, the staggering of appointments.
Oh, Chris. Mayor, was there anything from city?
I think it was, yeah. The term of office, so it'd be for four years, except um for the term of the initial members. Except that the initial term of the at large member shall be two years. So it's four year, the initial for the electives will have four years and then the um at large will have two years. So that then in another two years. Yes. Right. That's what's been added in. Section three point one.
Um. Is there an initial staggering, no?
That's, yeah, that's what I said, so if you look at three point one, section two, July, term of office. It says the term of office member of worship for years, except that the initial term of the at large member shall be two years. But that's the, we don't want to like stagger that anymore, and you play some, like, so that two, two, no more than two people are. Term.
Are making.
Are vacating at one time. So we have one. Or three. At large at like a one year.
What are your thoughts on that or what was your suggestion?
Well, and this was what Christina and I kind of talked about with it, yeah, because you've got um.
I think that upper one where it's more staggered, so you don't have like all the at large people turning over at once.
Yeah, and that's um, Christiana had done the, the alternate, the highlighted one there, two is what, two is what, or more simple.
I mean, it's simpler, but it's missing the point of the staggering.
Yeah.
Initial could be one year, two year, three year, four year.
Initial could be one year, two year, three year, four year.
A determined about board. And that's how it's really, it's really, that's how I wrote originally. She put in an alternate wanting to make it more. Because she's talking about her comment. You can't see all of it that she talks about, but it's um that can create confusion. Uh commencement dates may not compute properly. It'd be a lot of administrative fatigue to keep track of the term start and end dates and timing appointments.
Well, would be the.
Initial.
Yes, yes.
Could we add the votes on our annual round election as the county? Um, and that would be. And so then, yeah, because it's one of the concerns that I didn't want to say in that first two is that you've got four-year term, you know, that your initial ones are four-year terms for everybody else. And that so, I mean.
It would just be really hard to have all four, four-year members they in one shot.
Yeah.
Well, the way it is, though, now the staggering is for the at-large members, not the electives. Not, yeah, not the. So this is just for the initial board that you're doing the staggering.
Yeah.
So that that way you set it up and then they roll. Yeah, so that, yeah.
How about how about the electeds?
I did like, how about I was gonna say, how about the county and city representatives? Their terms are as long as they're elected terms, but they're all not going to, they're not. It's only one elected from each.
Yeah.
Then you'll turn over. You have two people.
Yeah, you could. I was gonna say that because you could end up.
Depends on who you want, I guess.
I like the upper one.
Yeah.
But then that is the that was the board of the city. Chris, are you better with that first one, too? This is your.
The answer, yes, I think that's fine. I think we have to study that. Over four years, three years. Right.
For other.
I would say I have four city council members who are dying to be on this board. This is getting, this is getting interesting.
You have how many?
Four have come in and said they want to be on on the board.
Wow, that's good.
They're chomping at the bit.
Yeah. It's good, though. Have a lot of that. Yeah. Yeah.
I didn't know if she was going to happen or something else. Nice sounds.
It's not by ourselves.
Okay, any other changes that we need to talk about on this current version of the idea?
Mayor, is there anything else from city council that you would have had feedback on that we should consider?
Nothing that I've heard of.
Okay, I would chat with everyone. Okay, I think we just want to make sure that we're hearing it.
I think these changes make a huge difference. It's going to be well received and and we just have to talk about this is part you know, this is a good faith effort uh on both parties and and uh, you know, it's.
Well, and I'll just say my concern about getting this town out is it'll go, I don't know how it would be presented. So my concern is with as city council member Lawrence has said before that she didn't want to consider it because she didn't get it.
There are some people who are contrarian. So I get it. Sometimes you have to do things
Yeah.
uh that are watched and sorry.
And that and I'm hoping these, I'm hoping that these won't be perceived as such substantive changes that.
Well, they are substantive, but but based on on the county committees, having that today that to, you know, work this, work through this because uh of city councils, you know, request for for one year. And that's kind of forced the issue.
Anything else so that I can zip this over to Christiana?
Again. Okay.
I hope Christiana has the bandwidth to deal with it.
That's why I, yeah. That cool. If I want to get it over to the right way, this is to get she at least can just look at the changes that I made during.
Well.
Chris, let me send you, let me send you, before you hit send to her, let me send you the PDF exhibit A. So she has that, too.
Okay, great.
That's as soon as I hop off, I'll get it to you, okay?
Okay, cool. So we need a formal.
No.
It's what?
No. I've got to go. I'll go one o'clock, which I will do before. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
I got the question.
Mayor.
Well, the question to you then is how best to be assistant city council on seeing these things? Um, because you've witnessed this process has been challenging. If I have the changes in hand, even if they're not formalized by Christiana, we can make those changes on the fly. Now, there 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 could be some reluctance if Christiana hasn't vetted them, but uh you you we we talk about this session that I think will be okay.
So we changed the term, we changed the term language, we changed the budget and we added what we all thought we talked about, there are the both ballot measure in yeah, living taxes.
And yeah, we also made changes in there in terms of staggering.
Yeah, the term, yeah, the board, board member terms, budget and uh ballot.
And we also changed the date to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Right.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Chris, I just hit send.
Tim, is there anything else that we?
Well, I should include in your. Have you just included the mayor on the response?
No, I am. Or and that's what I was gonna ask. Of what the 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 changes were.
Yeah, but you've been doing those every time through.
Yeah, in the back. And so all I need is Michael's.
Okay. Formally approve this IGA now and get it sent over as our.
As our draft, yeah, the county's county's proposed version. I, well.
You review that, you review.
I well, and I I just would say we've all reviewed it. Um, the thing is, is that the concern is you prove it. If you don't approve it pending final, you know, legal review, then if there are changes made through the city council tonight, we'll have to come back. So it's up to you all, however you want.
Well, or I mean, you say pending.
It's an approval, yeah. Do it that way. And that way it's not, not just.
You need to do it, I mean, why don't you please? Oh, because then, okay.
We need to approve it. So that way if they approve it, it's done and we want to get it finalized decently.
And then you can, can we? I'll just let Mayor know that.
Yeah. Well, I think he, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I move that we criminal agreement between Lake County and the city of Lethville on the creation of a regional housing authority including those changes discussed in the POCC meeting August seventh. Ending city council approval.
Second. Any further discussion? I don't think so. I think we're ready for.
No, no, no.
I think we're ready for the next steps, Jackie. Yeah, Jackie, were you missing anything?
I don't know. I'm like human way.
Michael, are we missing anything? Okay, okay. Okay, Steve, no further discussion. All is in favor.
I know.
I are. Okay. Thank you, Chris, for making changes. We appreciate it.
Sorry, I couldn't be there today. This is this is the fun vote, too.
Okay, thanks for for giving that. Okay. Um.
Oh. No, I'm sorry. I got it. I'm in it. Great. There you go. Um, I do know. Very, thank you so much. You're welcome. They really are.
I'm just gonna.
Oh.
Didn't you throw out some edits? Jeff had a few edits.
Yeah. I did not uh read through all your edited stuff, um but I will start on the May sixteenth of my meeting. Um, and I can send these to you.
Yeah.
Well, um, and I just like the math to care and know the recreation master plan. Um, and then recreation staff will manage this internally. Okay, um. And then they would like to present for the stretch on the women ballot, any evil counting, just clarify. Forty on the right counting. Or was it? Okay. Um. Okay.
And and I mean, just in case it helps you make that is we're not putting it on the ballot here.
Okay, yeah.
They were giving more like that FYI presentation. That they're putting on the ballot over there.
Okay. Yeah. And then this one, just because I really appreciate the full writeout of the acronyms, but just because this one is so for indexing, maybe if someone searches that.
Okay.
And it's often referred to as CCM. Oh. And then on the MMLOF, Jeff, on the June twentieth, we, I just put also discuss potential of including some county road route development in certain counties.
Oh. That makes sense.
And we talked about that as an additional potential. Um.
And then I just wanted it just so you know. I think the next step was I was gonna talk about design, this is how I understand. I was gonna work with our to present the application.
Okay.
For this.
Yeah, you're going to sing.
Okay. Okay.
Um, so this, um, that you bring first, um, we made a motion to extend the contract or amend the contract. But I don't think you captured that.
Okay.
You might have to go back and get it back.
Okay.
And then again, I just put the, I I really appreciate someone else to just to be accurate.
Okay.
That. Um. Um. Yeah, I think that was it. And I will send you this.
Okay, not that, no.
I I appreciate that. Yeah, they don't. No, it's more or the other. Um, the other question I had though was that I think we had a special meeting on May fourth the hearing on the building code. Um. May.
May.
Very good, okay. Um, and maybe Ann has that uh as, because she brought that as the news of language hearing. So maybe she just has that. But I just had a question on May fourth um building code hearing and then the board of health meeting that was either June sixteenth or seventeenth that Colin may have minutes for. Ask her about that.
Okay.
And usually we look at our board of health.
June, what was that?
Sixteen and seventeen. Okay. And then, I don't know, you guys, with our joint special meeting with city council. You have minutes, remember? On June twenty-third. And we had a, yeah, a couple of them, but I just realized that.
There was one day that I was totally gone.
Yeah.
You guys had a meeting, so.
Yeah, or maybe we just need to figure out like between joint meeting like that. How are we, yeah, how are we doing with that? Um, and maybe.
What was the date?
June twenty, June twenty-third. That was the special meeting. No decisions were made. Actually, we thought we were going to make some decisions on the housing IGA and for the guideline. And then that was when we said, well, the housing board is actually going to do that. And so we don't have.
Yeah, we have Zoom recordings of those. I don't know.
We do.
I don't know if the city court takes meetings.
They should do it. But just I don't have any.
Yeah, no.
Written minutes that we um though, again, no decisions were made.
That was made in the city.
Yes, yeah. Um. And that wasn't it. That was not a bad call. Thank you so much. So. One is.
Thanks for that.
Um, so with that, um.
And I do have a copy of that here as well.
Okay. Okay, um, so that I will make a motion to approve minutes of May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, or sorry, June sixth, twenty twenty-two, minutes of June twentieth, twenty twenty-two, minutes of June first, twenty twenty-two, minutes of June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, minutes of June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, five fifth, twenty twenty-two, minutes of July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, minutes of July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and months of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, with much heartbeat letter, official wages, uh track change at its share of CD. Or to include.
Thank you.
Um, no, just that when you're up, there was not a lot of.
No, and I I did see Jeff, so I'm.
Okay.
For more, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
I.
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 And then we took approved bills and payroll for the pay period ending on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
A second.
Any further discussion? Hey, Matt.
I.
I.
And then I'm going to approve the veteran service officer report for June twenty-two.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Um, just to be, oh, this gentleman's conversation, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but no, nothing, nothing with everybody doing it for.
Any further discussion?
Hi.
Hi. Um, just to add to that, Claire and Tim. Since I'm a junior student and the veteran. I would assume that we can have a special. Maybe see where it's ever so tracked or across that might not.
And then the E nine oh one statement, that was out by you, Chris. Um, that was not by Mia.
Mia?
By me, yeah. It's all right. Yeah. Okay. I don't, uh.
I don't think we have to do anything to formally approve it. I don't recall that.
No.
That's because we made a payment. Say we're done in a while. We paid for the Everbridge. Contract.
Okay. Okay, um, so any concerns of approving or not doing that? Um, I'm going to E nine oh one statement, um, due ninth or July eighth. you know, on the statement, um, due ninth or July eighth.
I'll second.
See then, all those in favor?
I.
Okay.
I.
Okay. Thank y'all very much.
Um. Exciting to view.
Yeah, Chris, thank you so much for your time today. Um, yeah, we'll be there today, one twelve, yeah, thanks very much.